...City Council work study session. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think most of our audience is here for the puppy mill ordinance. Do we want to take that first?
Sure.
Or suffer the rest of our meeting? I assume that's the case, right? All right, so we'll jump number three first.
There you go.
I am.
All right, so I -- is this our microphone on? Can you hear me? Okay, I think everybody's been pretty well introduced to the issue that was raised at the last couple of council meetings with the public testimony concerning prohibition of puppies and kittens from mill breeders. The issue was referred to the land use committee, and the land use committee studied the issue. A number of the ladies in the audience were present and had us watch a video on YouTube, and we discussed kind of the different options from the other cities that had taken action on this already, which include Bainbridge Island, Pauls Bow, and Ridderton, right? And so the committee recommended that we do bring an ordinance back to the city council for consideration, and so the city attorney and my staff worked on drafting an ordinance that's based on what the other cities in the county have adopted, and that is presented to you tonight. I think staff is supportive of moving forward with this ordinance. I think really the question is, what's our next step? Some on the committee suggested we take it to a public hearing at our first meeting of April, which at this point we would have enough time to get a notice of paper. But if there's another type of public outreach that we want to do, or if you just want to take it forward for action without a public hearing, you could consider it.
I would like to discuss the ordinance before we make any of those decisions. Do you like me to start?
Certainly.
Okay. I want to start my comments by saying that -- I'll start my comments by saying I'm not a supporter of puppy mills or kitty mills or those types of things. But the ordinance that was presented to us, I think needs -- I think it's -- I'll just tell you what my issues are with it, okay? The first issue I have, when I was reading it, was the definition of pet shop. The definition in here says a pet shop means a retail establishment where dogs and cats are sold, exchanged, bartered, or offered for sale. As pet animals to the general public at retail, such definition shall not include an animal shelter or an animal rescue league. Our current definition of a pet store is any place establishment, store, or department of any store that handles live animals, including dog, cats, rabbits, birds, reptiles, other fowl, or fish, and offers to sell or rent to the public such animals at retail or wholesale. Our current definition encompasses a lot more animals than just cats and dogs. So I would -- the bottom line for me is, I think that we can just adjust our current ordinance and not have to have the resolution that's here. The other part on this page four, restriction on the sale of animals. A pet shop may offer for sale only those dogs and cats that pet shop has obtained from or displays in cooperation with an animal shelter or an animal rescue league. We do not have a definition of either one of those in our current ordinance. So we would have to add a definition for animal shelter or rescue league. What we do have is an animal control authority, means the Kitsap Humane Society or other agency or organization designated as the animal control authority in an animal control service agreement. That's the only thing that we have now. So because when I read this number two A, I read a monopoly, and that's troubling to me. I don't think it's our intent to create a monopoly. So that's troubling to me, where I think all we need to -- the other thing, I think it'd be real easy in our current code to create a definition for puppy mill and kitty mill, whatever that definition is. I don't know what it is. I would create that definition, and under seventeen point one six point oh eight oh, which is our operation requirements, where currently, under number seven, it says ownership of an animal offered for sale. The owner, manager of the pet shop shall maintain written documentation of the source of all animals offered on consignment or otherwise being sold for compensation at the pet shop. Such documentation shall include a copy of the valid commercial kennel license for the source at the time of breeding and dispersment. Records of all animals, reptiles, fish, or other animals offered for sale shall be readily available to enforcement and licensing agents. So to me, somewhere in there, we could just say, we don't allow. But we have to define the puppy mill and the kitty mill, if that's what we want to do.
And add it to that section.
And add it to that section. Otherwise, the ordinance that we have presented to us, I'm not in favor of. The way it's written here, I'm not in favor of it. We've created a monopoly. We have changed what a pet shop is. When I read this, my first question was, are we trying to limit the sale of puppies and kitties from puppy mills and kitty mills? Or are we concerned about the welfare of animals? And to me, our concern should be the welfare of animals. So, you know, if it's our decision that we want to eliminate the puppy mill and kitty mills, I think there's an easier way to do it than this ordinance. That's my two cents.
I don't see where you find a monopoly in this ordinance. Can you explain, walk me through that again?
Well, when you say that a pet shop may offer for --
Are you talking about two A?
Yeah, two A. Can only sell dogs or cats from the pet shop that has been obtained from displays in cooperation with an animal shelter or a rescue league. You're not allowing any other breeders. And I don't know if our local -- because, see, this is limited to just cats and dogs. I don't know where our local parrot shop gets their parrots, and I think those are the only animals that we're selling in the city.
Walmart usually sells fish.
Yeah, and I don't know if they do or not. And I don't know if Tractor Sales sells bunnies or, you know, chicks.
Chicks.
Yeah.
Do you think it's saying that we can't sell animals other than cats and dogs?
That's what it is saying.
No, I think it's saying that those cats and dogs that they are selling can't be from puppy mills. It's not, I think it's actually silent on every other animal. That's the way I read it here.
It says it may offer for sale only those dogs and cats that the pet shop has obtained. So they have to obtain them from the animal shelter or the rescue league, and not from a local breeder.
Okay, we're talking about two different things. I see your point that you want local breeders to be able to sell their cats and dogs, but then you're bringing in other animals, and I think this is actually silent on other animals. You said that you think this means that we can't sell other animals.
The way they have defined a pet store, that's why I prefer our pet store definition. I think it's just real easy if we don't want to have them sell from the -- we define what the puppy mill is and the kitty mill is, put it in our definitions, and under that other section, just say, you can't sell these guys.
Well, it sounds like we need to see our ordinance in front of all of us, because it sounds like you have it, but we don't.
Yeah, it's on our website.
And that's fine, so we would, yeah, but we weren't prepared to talk about that ordinance tonight. I would be happy to do anything to streamline banning the sale of puppy and kitty mills, which I believe you are too. This did come up to economic development two years ago, when we could have been the first city to ban it, but we did not. We're now the last city.
We haven't, we don't have any, so it's not a --
But we could get them if it's not anywhere else, is the point.
It's not a time-sensitive issue. And when economic development looked at this, we were satisfied with this ordinance at that time. But now it's been brought to our attention, and we're re-looking at it.
I totally agree with that. And, you know, if this, the wording on this almost made it seem that pet shops couldn't even sell puppies or kittens if they did come from legitimate breeders.
Correct.
Which I don't understand why that would not be allowed. And we are concerned about the welfare of animals, and we don't want kittens and puppies coming from puppy mills and kitty mills. But I agree with you, and changing the wording there and defining kitten mills and puppy mills would take care of what we need to do. And there's always the question of enforcement.
Correct.
So do shops have, I mean, do we have code enforcement? Go to these shops to check this out? How do we?
Our code enforcement for animals would be the Humane Society.
The Humane Society?
Yeah.
And they regularly go to the shops and check the sources of their pets? Is that what they do?
Well, if it was on our code, they could, I mean, we have a contract with the Humane Society. If we have that in our code, I think they will do whatever we pay them to do.
Yeah, and I thought our code, I didn't print and bring with me the entire code, the entire chapter seven, but they do our licensing for our hobby kennels too, I believe, and our pet stores. Does that come through the city, or does that come through Humane Society?
They will sell our, we have a one-time, lifetime license, so if you have a dog or a cat, you can license that city, it's a one-time.
But our pet stores, and if we happen to have a --
We don't, we don't have one, so I couldn't tell.
Do we have hobby kennels?
Not that --
I don't think we do in the city.
The clerk's shaking her head, no.
No.
Not that are registered with the city.
Okay.
So it sounds like you would like our current ordinance, what I'm hearing from two anyway, is, you'd like our current ordinance brought back with those -- Mr. Bonn, you're the author of most of our code, you and the attorney. What is your?
You're probably not prepared.
I think my, I think where this probably needs to go from here, and I would actually suggest taking it maybe to the next economic development meeting, because Councilmember Ashby has some pretty clear ideas about what should happen. It could go to land use, which is a little bit sooner, I think, in terms of when the next meeting is scheduled.
Bring it back to, I mean, I don't know that it needs to go to a committee.
I don't think it does.
I think you could bring it to a council meeting as a discussion item.
And those are just my opinions. I don't know how Sean or Jay feels or how.
No, I think we're getting to the same point.
Yeah.
The market I had on this particular proposal ordinance is under definition three. Last sentence there says, such definition shall not include animal shelter or animal rescue league, comma, as defined, and we're not, we didn't provide a definition for this.
Right. It seemed to me that there was --
It might be the moot point if we go the other direction.
It seemed to me there would be more work to do to update our definitions and everything, to work with that, with the ordinance that was practiced.
So I'm happy to either take it to a committee or to a council meeting the next council meeting.
Why wouldn't we bring?
I don't think we need to take it to a committee.
Yeah, I think next week's too soon to try to get the work done.
If it is as easy to modify as Councilman Ashby suggests, then it could be quite a quick change. I just want us to ban puppy mills, whatever method we do, so as quickly as possible. I'm hoping we don't have any more delays on this.
Fred, we're not banning puppy mills, and we're not banning kitty mills. What we are doing is not allowing the sale of the animals from those places in our pet stores. That's what's being asked of us. Banning puppy mills and kitty mills is a much bigger issue, and these ladies are trying to keep that from happening by having localities like ours not sell the animals, because you can't, that's an enforcement issue that would be very difficult to deal with, and I don't know how you'd start with that. But I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to have these kinds of places selling these kinds of animals. But, you know, I like your suggestion a lot. I think that we could remedy the whole thing by changing those definitions.
And I don't know where we get the definition of a puppy mill.
So I believe our next council meeting we could take this up at would be the tenth, first meeting in April. And there is, I think, land use the day before that on the ninth, and then --
I don't think it needs to go back to another committee. I just, I'd bring it back to that meeting for discussion, and if it gets too, the discussion gets too involved for a council, at the tail end of a council meeting, then we'll punt into that work study, which is a week later, where we have, we can have a more robust conversation if we need it, but I'm not sure that we're going to need it if we're updating definitions in our code to have that discussion and then bring it back at the next council meeting thereafter for adoption, if everybody's in agreement with those changes in definitions.
So in terms of having a hearing, I assume we'll want to have a hearing on whatever ordinance is ultimately considered?
But if we're just changing, do we need to have a hearing if we're just changing the definition?
If we're just changing the definition.
In our existing code?
No, you don't have to have a hearing for changing something, you know, the provisions of chapter seven of the code, it's not a land use regulation. So it's really --
So I think that's what I'm hearing, is that we would potentially just change the definitions within our, and some of the language in our existing code for, to achieve --
To achieve the same thing.
The same result.
Yes.
But then I'll ask, the question is, if we're changing definitions, but then adding language, does that require, like, of a meeting?
It's not required. It's more of whether you want to provide an opportunity for people in favor or against something to testify.
This is kind of bomb and apple pie stuff.
Yeah, it is.
I think we're going to be okay.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, so let's give you a chance, we give you three weeks to work. You know, I must have about two and a half weeks, but I'm happy to change the definition and bring it back, and we'll discuss it at the dais. You'll give us direction at that point to, yes, this is what we're looking for, and we'll get it on the next council meeting thereafter, or no, this needs more work and more discussion, and we'll bring it back a week later for the work session.
Because I think our current ordinance is pretty thorough. Chapter seven is pretty thorough.
And we can all get copies of those. We'll look that up meanwhile.
We'll bring, actually, we'll have a red line version when we discuss, have it as a discussion at the dais. That'll be our, that'll be what we'll work with. Okay, so let's back up to number one. Number one is initiative and referendum. We've been, we --
Thank you for your time, I really appreciate your questions.
Emil, you'll answer some of those questions you have. Because they probably read that in the document.
Okay, we became a code city here, gosh, unlucky, a year ago, and we said at that time we would bring back, throughout the, and the tail end of last year, and the first part of this year, we updated our code to bring it in line with the verbiage for code city, and done that, and I'll put a fumbling through this, and let's hear him talk. We said that we wanted to talk about initiative and referendum after we got all of the housekeeping stuff done, and so it was your direction to bring it back, so here we are. Sharon?
I'm not sure how much I can add to that, destroying my computer. Because the MRSC has put together this lovely guide that I provided to you, so there's, it covers a lot of the information about how, you know, what the powers are, how they are obtained, how they are gotten rid of, if that comes to it, what, how they are exercised if the city were to adopt them. So I think if you've had a chance to review that information, it's a good starting point for further discussion, and I know that Jay has brought up a question about the use of initiative and referendum in cities that have adopted it, and I'm not sure that we have that information, unfortunately, that I'm not, it could be that there's somebody at the state level that tracks how often those are used, but I'm not sure. It might be a matter of sort of doing a survey of those cities to find out how often it's actually used, but that would be useful information to know at this point, I grant.
What I do know from the information I was handed, there are 281 cities in the state, forty-eight have this on books, which is 17 percent of the cities in the state that have enacted it. And it varies, and Sharon and I were, it varies from city to city what the thresholds are. So, and then how you go about them. So the process varies a bit from city to city.
What I noticed, I think what stuck out to me most when I read through this, was that the limitations of what can have an initiative and what can have a referendum. And I must say that I was not totally clear when I read this. That if a citizen came to me and said, you know, they wanted to do initiative, I'm not sure that I would know that was something that would be eligible or not eligible. So I wondered how we would make that clear to the citizens. The other thing that I thought of, and on the state level, if I'm not mistaken, that after an initiative is passed, can't the legislature change that, amend it after two years?
That is a good question. I don't think I have that answer off the top of my head.
I think they can. So because of unintended consequences, sometimes the way things are written.
You think you got apples and you got oranges.
Correct, and so they can go in and massage it. And I wondered if that was available to the cities also.
I don't think how this reads, that is available to us.
It's not, it's not clear. I mean, it does, it does sound like if there are unintended consequences, there might be some way of going in and sort of fixing those consequences. Because, like you said, I mean, the way, one of the arguments against adopting these powers is that those who are putting together the initiative don't necessarily have all of the facts needed to sort of really globally understand the issue. So I think that, you know, when you put it on the, if the city were to adopt this, they could get an initiative, and you put it on the ballot for, that's where, you know, the city attorney can come in and craft it in such a way that, you know, it makes sense for, you know, what it is that we're trying to accomplish. But, yeah, the city doesn't have a whole lot of control over what the citizens have decided they want to have, to have voted on. So I will do that research for you, I'll bring that information back, but it does seem like if there are genuine consequences that were unlooked for, that there could be something that could be done to, you know, tweak the legislation down the road.
It seems to me that in the past, when we talked about initiatives, or this ability to have this, the initiative and referendum, it was misleading, because some of the citizens that were leading an effort presented information that wasn't accurate, from what I've read today, that this is a whole lot more restrictive than I would have ever thought, that there are so many areas that don't apply, and that especially when you go by the case law that has been established. For instance, I know there were citizens that were interested in having the fluoride taken out of the drinking water. That could not be determined by an initiative, because it's considered administrative. I never knew that. And I think most of what we would have to deal with is determining what is actually administrative and what's legislative, and that doesn't seem to always be that clear.
It's not always clear, no.
I have a big question about, if we do adopt something like that, who pays for this? Who pays for these initiatives to go on the ballot?
The city does.
Well, I, right. And if especially, if it's a special election, how much can that actually be? That would be where my concern would lie, is how would we budget for something like this? And, you know, I don't know that it is used that much in various cities. I was kind of looking around, and it just seems to be times when there's a little more at stake. I thought it would have to do with taxes, perhaps if people were going to complain about taxes and want to lower them or change that, and that's not even something that can be done. Most of the concerns of the citizens, it seems, would not be addressed by what the power of initiative is, nor referendum. So, you know, again, I was very surprised. I was misled initially by what that meant, and now I feel I have a better idea. And I was going through the cases, and I thought, whoa, even more so after reading the results, the outcome of these cases, so.
That would be administrative, my biggest concern is managing that expense. If we were to find a budget together, we would need --
To budget that?
We'd need budget money for it, in the event that if a petition came forward, that we didn't know anything. Two-year window is a long time, you know, to be budgeting it, and so I would, you know, probably fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. It could be less than that, and the more than ten, twelve thousand dollar, possibly, if it's --
Or more.
If it's our, if it happened to fall on our council election is, you know, it's every other time, but in the other timeframes, if it was on a November election, it's not as expensive, but if it turned out to be a special election, we would bear a tremendous expense.
Right. And another thing is staff time. It seems to me that when I read what the obligations would be for city staff, it's considerable. So it's not just the cost of the election, putting it on the ballot, it's the staff time that would be required. So I'm not sure that this accomplishes much.
Well, just, I try to boil it down to just maybe a little bit of reality, and I'm not hearing a lot of this out of the community. You know, we are a small town, I think we, we're here three nights a week. This is a classic example of this puppy mill issue. Over the last few weeks, we have a group of concerned citizens that have come together. I think this, at least this current council, is a council that listens and reacts importantly to our citizens, and so I think it could just be a necessary burdensome step, whereas, you know, I think where our constituents go forward, we do this, and I think it does, you know, direct us as policymakers and our staff to act accordingly. I don't know that this is necessary to get to the end of some of these concerns. I think we can already get there with what we have today. It's not a problem, and so we have to create some unknowns, some financial potential liabilities. I don't think it's necessary at this time.
My concerns are probably threefold. One is the financial, possible financial obligation. I mean, it could be more, it could be less. You know, if it was in a national election, we're just one line item. The second thing is, when, you know, Cindy brought up about, you know, the statutory, you know, one's items, it always scares me when I read something like, these topics are not likely to be subject to initiative and referendum powers, but they don't say clearly that they aren't. And so that, that concerns me, because that kind of leaves open the door for folks to get in. And the lastly is the one about the, and it was right in here, because I quoted, it's basically supporters of representative democracy. I mean, we're elected for a reason, and if folks aren't happy for us, we can be voted out or removed from office if we're not doing our job. I know it's probably a little too direct, but I don't want to have, in some cases, because of the number of people that need to sign a petition, and could, we know how many people vote in off-year elections, you could really get the tyranny of the minority on an initiative, if it's not, you know, if it's not large enough. Those are my, those are my three concerns about that, so.
I'm going to take that, go with both Sean and Jay said. When -- When a group of people would bring together an initiative, it's not going to have the same vetting. That we would do if they would bring something forward to council. Because we need staff input to find out, you know, the realities of it in addition to our policy side of it. I think we do a more thorough job on behalf of the citizens when it comes through the council rather than on an initiative.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, writing the fair, you know, over the last few years, you know, when there are initiatives on a statewide level, there are people there trying to collect signatures and surveys. And it's almost appalling, the facts that they don't bring to you, that they're just looking for some random signature, it really is almost dangerous. Because somebody signs it, that sounds like a great idea, but they don't really understand the whole thing, and I agree, I think that we did, we dive a lot deeper. And take a lot more accounting versus just something willy-nilly, you know, creating a fairly large expense for people that really don't understand. You know, the entire, entire initiative that they may be trying to be involved with, it's like, it'd be very, very misleading.
I didn't see in the list of cities any that, um, I was actually amazed that there were so many code cities, I think it's about forty or so. And it seems like the headlines haven't really shown the real effects of people doing privileged um, initiatives. I appreciate what Jayce said about the the low threshold of voters, um, it seems though that it's not. Based on the amount of people who voted in the last election, but the registered voters, and it has to be fifteen percent, so they aren't sizable in some elections. I I would agree with him that the benefit to the public is kind of murky because there's not a clear cut flow chart like this, it's what you do. You know, these are the the things that you could not do, and just the ones you could. Uh, for example, the thing that probably we have heard a lot about, is being one of the most unpopular things, is the utility rates, which is off the table. Doesn't look as much of a benefit as it should be, so I don't think that people would be very sad, I think they're not very limited in. I did remember what is the smallest city that's had it, um, but even the, you know, just because, like, let's say Swimsbury is a city of our. I don't think they've had many.
You know, Port Angeles did last election, because they are a code city and they had an initiative. To to repeal their code city and go back to a second-class city, and that was an initiative that, yes.
But it did go to a vote, so it did pass.
But once it, once it gets to a certain point, it has to go to a vote, the people who brought it forward, in fact. Didn't do a lot of campaigning or or lobbying for it.
And talking to some folks from up there, it was more about, they were disset, dissatisfied with their city council. So, it was about changing their former government, so that the whole council had to sit for the election. Where if you were satisfied, then engage in the process and run for office. And that is, here's what what I should have reported that.
They say it's also hard to change the form of government, whatever you have to change to or for the interview, but is Oklahoma the smallest city?
I I do echo Jay's comment, so, you know, here we've got a list of things that are likely, you know, that. They're likely to be, uh, not, you know, topics that you couldn't do this for. Well, the problem is, then we're in, we're spending our attorney time to determine whether it is or. So this is, uh, is another challenge, financial challenge here. I'm not, I'm going to need to think your handstands for this. So let's, uh, recommendation to table this for the pending. Well, she's got ten minutes, we have to talk about Ted Parker in ten minutes.
I was confused by this one.
So wait, yeah, wait till, go wait till he's talking.
As my neighbor, I'm the neighbor to this, so I did not bring this forward, but there are, between my my property and the log cabin. Is an un-unopened section of right-of-way that goes down into the ravine, the street, the city's never going to build a street through there. And they've put some park, very nice benches there out in front of the log cabin museum, but they put them all.
So they're already installed?
They're, they did, they did some.
Semi-installed. Yeah, that's what I thought.
They put them on top of these.
No, no, I got that part.
And then, we're just concerned because in the right-of-way, that it's a public safety issue.
Is there a reason why they have to be donated to the city?
Well, so here's, at the land use committee, I basically said, well, city right-of-way, we'll just install them. No big deal, but then walking up here, I started thinking about, I thought this is the same right-of-way, Randy, that. You and Nick and I talked about, but it's already been big here.
No, it hasn't.
It was, because there was that.
And that's the other side.
There was a proposal, but it never went through.
No, I thought there, didn't we determine, remember that was, it was part of the board nineteen eighty-nine? Isn't this one that followed into that?
It was part, that area is part of the original boundaries of the city.
Okay, it wasn't in the county.
Correct.
Okay, so because it wasn't, so I just wanted to verify, so because it wasn't in the county originally that was then brought into the plan amendment. The right-of-way didn't automatically revert to the underlying fee simple ownership, which everybody has to the center for right-of-way. Because if it, if it did, then I'd say they, it's theirs, it's their property, but since it's still public right-of-way, then public works will just go in. And install them properly, and I'm assuming that.
Probably, what we're probably going to have to do is, what what they're trying to do is prevent somebody from walking away with the benches.
Right, I just, I just want to say, these two benches were purchased as a memorial for one of their longtime volunteers. And they don't have the plaques on them yet, and so their only concern is if they donated them, could they get them back? Because the the benches have meaning to to the museum.
We'll install them like we installed the benches down on the base of Professor Cass.
The best scenario.
The real slab will be.
Yeah, we need to do a slab there.
And then if they want to take them up, then they undo the bolts and we take them off. Yeah, we'll use faulty bolts and concrete slab, that way they're. Secure for when they need to be there, and if something must have removed them in the future, they can remove them.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're good.
So, yeah, we just need to go in for a slab, and then they'll do some sort of.
So my confusion was, eh, when I started reading this, it sounded like they wanted to donate two-part benches, and then it made it sound like they were already installed. And it was like, wait a minute, if they're already installed, what's the issue, and then I figured out the part about safely installing.
They're just sitting on center brackets. Um, so I have, I have two for the order for installing.
Well, I've got one for you, if it's yours, maybe it's one of your two, is the West Town Utility Franchise Agreement, is that one of your two?
So, the franchise agreement, Sharon can attest. We found out about, I guess a year ago, realized that as we were revamping our right-of-way permit process. That the right-of-way permit requires a traffic control plan, it requires bonding for any contractor. Because at the end of the day, the public streets are the responsibility of the city, and so you could have a contractor or a utility provider that goes in. They tear up the road, they just walk away, and it's the taxpayers who end up making that repair. And so. When I realized, and then brought it to Sharon's attention, that, I think we started with Puget Sound Energy or somebody confirming, because I. We don't, and these franchises, they don't speak to, the requirement have a bond, and so we started with Wave as the first template. They've subsequently agreed to the, we've approved that, they have a. Bond account that has a certain amount of money, and we track that, so they come in and do work. It's a performance bond, when the work's done and accepted, the performance bond at a hundred percent rolls then into a. Two-year, twenty percent maintenance bond, and if they have five or six or ten, we track. When the two year's up, and then we release it, so we're doing.
So it's way down in the weeds, but we don't need to be.
Well, it's, anyway, so we're we're going through that process, while I'm stalling for time. So we're going through that process.
That's twenty minutes.
So, we've, we've started that process, Wave Cable, set up, and we're going to go and do it with everybody else. We decided to do West Town Utility District second, because they had no agreement. And we've reached out to their general manager and their attorney numerous times, and we've received basically a.
They're refusing to do it, and I, I, he goes on the utility committee, they've seen the pictures, the of the various examples of. Improperly compacted sewer water lines, they go out and do a connection, doesn't get compacted properly. Three years later, we end up coming along and having to repair the road, because. Or the, or a sidewalk, and, you know, there are utility customers, and it's. But it's our roadway, and they need to make sure that the roadway's done, repaired properly, and they're not willing to sign this agreement. So, we're at the point where we're going to start, stop working, West Town Utility, and we just wanted to talk. Mark's got, Mark's going to write an email with the general manager tomorrow, and before we did that, and you guys started doing phone calls from the electeds at West Town Utility. We just wanted to give you a heads up.
I mean, there's.
Are they doing a lot of work in the city right now?
They do, they do service work all the time, um, so.
We just wanted to get a permit and to bond the work, so that if the street sinks or the sidewalk cracks. We don't have to pay, our citizens don't have to pay for it, their contractors should have to pay.
And they, and they don't even have to do the bond account, I mean, they should set up the bond account, but their contractor should. In their contract between them is ultimately going to cover the cost, so this is a no big deal, and I don't know why it's becoming a big deal, so. I'm just going to send an email out just saying, hey, by the way, you've not executed this agreement, therefore, you know. Any work that I, we see you doing will be done so without a right-of-way permit, and we'll stop working, so. Yeah, there's no nice way to say.
To say, yeah.
And I went to lunch with one of the commissioners, and tried to, I gave him the examples, showed you what the problem is. We should know about this, that, that's, you know, what can, you know, it's kind of like some of our developers that want to do things the way we did them back in the seventies. And, you know, it's a liability for us, if these streets don't be fixed properly.
Jared shouldn't pay tax money to fix something that West Town's contractor failed to do properly.
Right, and that they're getting money for, I mean, they're getting paid fees for that.
All right, so just, that was just a heads up, emails going out, you might get a phone call.
And you wanted me to talk about the SR sixteen?
No, that's for Chelsea, you and I to talk about.
Oh, okay.
She gets here, after we're done with Chelsea, she just wants, she doesn't have that information, she thinks it's, everything's just swell with that process.
Are we talking?
The SR sixteen.
It depends on who, it depends on who you're listening to.
The the work, the study that you're doing?
Mark went to the latest meeting, so really, nothing's going to come of it.
Right, I mean, if you listen to Wash Dot, they'll say, the SR sixteen Tacoma Narrows Bridge to SR three, which is actually Loxie Egan's. You know, has followed their least cost design process, and it's hit all the milestones, and they've developed a list of strategies. But at the end of the day, it, there's really nothing that has come out of it. And so they're, they've got a lot of documents, and that's what I asked at the last meeting, was to make sure that. When they present this to the electeds.
Come on up, we're talking about the corridor study.
So when they come in and present to the electeds, I said, you know, they gave us a medium-sized packet, and they talked about all this other data that they had. So when you present to the electeds, you better have it refined down to basically these two pieces of paper.
We're just getting an update from our office, go on, Sharon's not well.
Bye-bye, get better.
So, you know, I waded through all this, I said, like, this is the only thing that matters, and what this is, is basically, you know, nine months' worth of work.
They're going to do some meter ramping and some striping, the projects don't meet any other criteria.
Right, so everything, the, this is what started with like a hundred and eighty strategies, because they won't do projects, they got whittled down to ninety-two or something. And everything in black doesn't meet. Any of the criteria that they've established based on funding packages A, B, C, and D. So when you look at the real meat of what needs to be done, so for example, for Port Orchard, let's say Gorst. I felt really good that project one, solution ID one twenty-two is to construct a bridge across St. Clairmont. I said, like, it has to be on the list, there's no reason to. Talk about putting billions of dollars in Gorst when it's going to be underwater because of a tide or tsunami or liquefy. It is in the bottom, no, 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 no. And if you look at our immediate concerns, which is the failing of the SR sixteen Sedgwick or the SR sixteen Tremont. Interchanges, which aren't ours, and it's kind of the situation that Bermerton's having with the Warren Haven Bridge, that this isn't even our bridge. Is that those projects are also in the no, 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 no category. Because, because how they did this is they had, so strategy A is a twenty-twenty-two horizon. So it includes what they determine near-term and low-investment potential solutions. Then strategy B, which is the next column over, is near or midterm or low or medium investment potential solutions for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-seven. C goes into mid or long-term or low or medium investment potentials, twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four. And then strategy D, which is the last column, is more long-term and low, medium, or high investment potentials. So they're working down, again, in these tiers, to say, if we put more money at it, it's going to be a longer-term solution. As opposed to a low investment and something that's going to get us down a couple of years. So, the only thing that might possibly happen, SR sixteen one sixty, would be ramp terminal. Do some re-channelization and signal optimization, or ramp metering, but Nick and I know. And then the other thing is in that body of work, I think, Rob and Beck, you saw that other graphic that I brought that showed. The current. Those two interchanges are operating at a thirty-seven percent capacity.
Right, I still have.
And so, you know, they need to have compact roundabouts on both ends, just like Gig Harbor, you know, when you're getting off to go out. It's just a compact roundabout on each end, that would increase, I think, dramatically. The level of service of both those interchanges at a fairly low investment, but again, they.
Those solutions aren't.
Yeah, they're, they're all no, so. Wash Dot, again, as I said when we walked in, Chelsea's Wash Dot will say, hey, this was a great study. We followed our least-cost design methodology, and we came up with strategies, no scoping, no real projects. Um, they're going to put false numbers to these, and everybody's going to get their name on a report, and we're going to go, yay. And it was, for me, it was just a complete waste of a year. You know, because I've, I've invested four hours on probably ten different occasions on the technical advisory group.
So you're not going to sign it?
I don't, you know, it's nothing for me to sign, they're going to have my name listed as the group.
You could ask that they strike through your name.
You know, but, and I can guarantee you, if you talk to Bermerton or the Corps or.
Well, Gig Harbor, Gig Harbor has changed, but you, were you there when Ron Williams, the old city administrator? Really, and we met with Wash Dot.
Yeah, with Dennis Engel.
Right, and John, John was there, John Weins was there too, when we met them in Olympia. Because they didn't want this to happen, but that is what happened.
Yeah, I mean, and again, if Dennis does a really good job, the reality is, their hands are tied.
No money.
This, well, the no money, the state adopted this least-cost practical solutions practice, and it, their hands are tied throughout the whole thing. We tried, we pushed and we pushed and we pushed, and ultimately came back.
What's the difference between this and Highway three oh five, where they're getting projects moved forward on three oh five?
I think the only difference is, on that corridor study, it was a funded corridor study, from the standpoint of. I think the three oh five is probably about, about eight years old, it involved Paulsville, Bainbridge.
Transit, transit led them.
Transit.
Transit gets several dollars.
Right, well, we got money in through CARCC, and we put it towards that countywide study, then we said, no, let's put it to three oh five.
Right.
The reality of it is, they'll probably end up. At the same place at some point, unless they get money through regional.
What I know is, they've got like thirty million dollars out of Connect Washington, and they've had a meeting. They, they took their three oh five after their group has massaged it, and they have met with a practical. has massaged it and they have met with a practical design committee in Olympia and they're ready to move forward with some things. I don't know what they are.
I don't, yeah, so they, so if they got that funding, they've, they've not talked about that funding at Trans, Transfall.
Yeah, because that's Connect Washington.
Right, so, um, I mean, there's nothing saying that, so what was that West Sound group that we had? There's nothing saying that we couldn't, you couldn't get, especially in the Gorst, because we know that we took over this study. It was originally Tacoma Narrows to Gig Harbor North and because we fired the team that was tuning Gorst, they combined it. And we, and we took over their project.
Well, this is really an opportunity for Chelsea and Brianna because we've got our own cor, what, what really has to happen is we have to finish our corridor study and identify the projects ourselves.
And the key players.
And then engage with our lobbyists and our, and our delegation because we've got data shows that those intersections fail.
Right, so the good thing that came out of this is we have now data that shows that they're failing. We know that Paulsville and Bainbridge don't care. The county cares because they've got issues with the old Belfer Highway and San Christopherson and, and then they're also suffering with the, the county, the state came in and restrike three, three oh four and that's, that doesn't work with three, three oh four, but it's created a much larger problem in Birmingham and in the Kitsap County UGA. So, you'd have Kitsap County, Birmingham, the port of Birmingham and Port Orchard that should really form our own mini legislative body to take the information from this report and say, okay, we've identified these, they didn't fall into the little categories, but these are legitimate concerns and let's see what we can do similar to what they did in the north end to get some funding. You know, the bridge, that's a big deal.
I think West Sound Alliance is broken.
Oh, because there's no.
Got too, got too broad and Mark's spot on. We need our own little group that's related to these projects and, and, and join, join our efforts.
I always thought they were too Belfer oriented.
Well, there needs to be, there could be a roundabout at Old Belfer and San Christopherson because that's, that's a danger.
But we, did you say Gig Harbor? Because I don't know if you've developed a relationship. Are you still working with Gig Harbor? Um, because they're critical part of the sixteen, unless you wanna just focus on the sixteen this year.
Out of the body of this work, the, the Gig Harbor piece shrunk and it doesn't go beyond Gig Harbor North. So, I mean, you can from a, if you're looking at a south end coalition.
Right.
Then that would be the benefit. If you're really looking at what affects Port Orchard, you're talking about Tremont, Sedgwick, and Gorst.
Right.
And then Loxie Egan's and the Sherman Heights, you know.
And eventually, if, when McCormick would develop even Highway three, they were sending slope needs.
Right. So, anyway, so we can.
We were, we were stalling and dove into something we probably shouldn't have.
Oh, I'm sorry to keep you waiting. See, you have good lobbyists that fund transportation projects and then they get stuck on their way into town.
You didn't get, you didn't get, you didn't get hung up on my Tremont. It was a fluke, pretty long.
The G two was actually working pretty well.
Yeah.
It, it, no, it's working great. Just teasing you on.
So, Brianna's up, she's got the bug too, so she's not in here tonight. So, everybody knows Chelsea, I believe.
I believe so, yeah. So, I will dive right in. I just wanted to provide you with an end of session legislative update, talk about what we accomplished this year, how that sets the stage for next year. Um, and then.
Grab one of those mics maybe just so we can get you for the tape.
Absolutely. And then, um, talk about how that will play into the next legislative biennium. So, really quick as a reminder, we just ended a sixty day session. It's the second year of the biennial cycle. Um, we finished on time, which is very irregular in Olympia. So, Brianna and I are very excited that we can transition back into strategy and working on your legislative priorities for the coming biennium. Uh, the legislature adopted three budgets this year. They were supplemental capital, operating, and transportation budgets. Uh, a couple of them were particularly important for you all. Uh, there were a record number of bills that were introduced this year, um, most that has ever been introduced in the second year of a biennial cycle. And the Democrats were in control of both the House, the Senate, and of course, the governor's office, which meant that there were a lot of bills that, um, had been stopped through the process last year and in previous years that we were playing defense on, especially this year, um, as they move very quickly through the process and there are particularly costly measures for cities and local governments, generally speaking. Uh, so a lot of playing defense this year. Looking forward, the November election could change the dynamic in Olympia yet again. Very slim majorities. Um, there's a potential that the Republicans could take control of either the House or Senate. Um, and so it's, uh, important for you all to keep that in mind. It's particularly as you're in a swing district and that could change, uh, the way that you interact with your local legislators. So, really quick, um, the budget looked good this year. Um, so there was a really positive, uh, revenue forecast that came out in February, which meant that legislators didn't have to look to raise new revenue in order to balance the budget. Um, as the McCleary Supreme Court decision continued to play out through this legislative session, there was a need of essentially a billion dollars to fund education, teacher salaries specifically this year that had to be addressed. Um, last year, I reported to you all at the end of session that McCleary had been fixed, uh, and the Supreme Court felt otherwise. Uh, they thought that the legislature had figured out how to fund it, but that, that they didn't do it in time. And so, rather than the new salaries going into effect for teachers in twenty nineteen, they wanted that to occur in twenty eighteen, which led to that one billion dollar shortfall. So, fortunately, that budget forecast that came out positively enabled the legislature to kind of move some money around in various accounts and that was, um, politically challenging, but they made it happen and that was ultimately why they got out of Olympia on time. So, specific for you guys, uh, you had a few legislative priorities this year. Um, it's a shorter list than last year because a couple of the things were checked off in that first year of the biennial cycle. Um, but the first is, of course, the Rockwell Downtown Pocket Park. So, the three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated, um, in the negotiated capital budget last year that ultimately didn't pass, did pass during the second week of session this year. Um, so we are excited to continue working with you guys to get the remaining need. Uh, the total cost is one point two million. So, um, we'll continue to push forward with those requests in the next couple of years. Um, also, uh, there were a few different transportation related items as I walked in and heard a little bit about. Um, so the first is, just generally speaking, the fact that cities do not have a dedicated source of revenue for transportation leads to all these problems. And so, we partnered with AWC on a, a budget request that directed the Joint Transportation Committee to do a study, another study, um, to compare, uh, Washington State to other states and see how they're funding, um, city level transportation needs. Now, I think that there's a general sense of frustration about studies and their efficacy, but in Olympia, the way that it happens is you get a study, you get the data to show this is absolutely a need, even though everybody knows it's a need. But it gives you the talking points you need in order to effectively advocate for something. So, as, you know, there continues to be a declining, um, gas tax revenue, this conversation about cities' transportation funding needs can play into that if we have that data. So, our hope is that as this study, as was proposed in the budget and ultimately came through in the final budget, rolls out, we're able to kind of put those two things together and maybe as the legislature comes up with the next connecting Washington funding package can, can roll in these city needs into that, the way that they move projects forward in the future. So, that's one thing. Uh, the next is Representative Young worked on a Tacoma Narrows Bridge bill. It's gonna be signed by the governor on Thursday and the mayor will be there with me for the bill signing. Um, and essentially, that keeps the Tacoma Narrows Bridge tolls at no more than five dollars and twenty-five cents for that base rate. And, um, no toll increases will occur until twenty twenty-three. Additionally, there were some, um, bills that were introduced earlier this session that would've extended tolls in perpetuity. And, um, Representative Young's bill specifically ensured that that did not happen. Um, I think that tolls will probably be one of the ways of the future and so it's gonna continue to be an issue, but the fact that we were able to stop that from happening this year, um, in kind of an unprecedented way since no other tolling structures or, or bridges have been financed that way, um, is a positive impact for you all here. Um, finally, let's see here, so there's one other transportation related thing. Um, so last year on your legislative agenda, you had an item about increasing the pop, the population threshold with which, um, cities have to meet or become eligible or required to pay for, um, state routes that run through cities. Currently, it's at twenty-five thousand. There was a bill that was introduced early in session that increased that figure to thirty-five thousand. Um, the bill was amended and the new threshold is twenty-seven thousand five hundred for twenty eighteen. And then the goal is that over the, in five years, that figure will increase another twenty-five hundred and then five years later, another twenty-five hundred until we ultimately get to twenty twenty, twenty thirty-three and the new threshold is thirty-five thousand. So, that's a win for you guys as well. Um, you are pretty far from that threshold as of right now, but as you continue to grow, um, that will become an issue for you even more so.
Except you're an issue in building regrets, we might be there in a couple of weeks.
So, that's good. Positive news then.
Yeah, the only, only caveat that I would add is what we learned when we fought, the state trying to dump one sixty-six on us before as a spur road, RCW twenty, forty-two, forty, forty-seven, twenty-four, speed specifically been maintenance, but it's still a state highway. And then when it hit in that RCW, that's when that had the twenty-two five, it's now up to twenty-five and then twenty-seven five. But there was another RCW thirty-five thirteen, that's kind of a, you gotta track that because that RCW specifically says that the DOT is not required to maintain a road as a city grows into its UGA.
Okay.
And so, the issue there is that we had the exact example on Mile Hill where the legislatively set one sixty-six end point, mile point was at the east edge of the movie theater. When the city annexed up to Whittier, about six hundred feet, it fell on no man's land because the state said, even though you're under the twenty-two five, RCW thirty-five thirteen says that we're not required to add additional lane miles if you, and so that's a, that's ultimately the basis of how we ended up winning R five with DOT was the contradiction of those two RCWs. So, I would just make sure that as you have these conversations on forty-seven twenty-four, that you keep thirty-five thirteen in mind because that will create these no man land issues.
We had a state highway, an island of six hundred feet, a city in.
And then county. Because, because the state, even though we annexed it, they said, we don't grow with the annexation for that RCW. Yeah, so, anyway, there's a contradiction and that's what the transportation decided for us to say, hey, DOT, you got this contradiction, deal with it, but they haven't yet. So, so this is, these are great numbers unless these numbers come from the UGA, right?
Got it. Well, it looks like we have our first item for our next legislative agenda. Um, sounds good. Okay, well, we'll talk about that later too. Um, and then the last item on your agenda was, uh, the comprehensive plan update parity, which spurred from, pun intended, uh, a, a bill last year, um, that Representative Appleton worked on, uh, which would've brought all of the four PSRC counties, um, in line and doing their comprehensive plan updates at the same time. Uh, the unintended consequences of that bill that was dropped though is that it requires Kitsap County and the jurisdictions, jurisdictions within it to rely on old OFM census data in order to do those, um, updates. So, we worked with Kitsap County over the interim and their lobbyists redrafted that legislation, um, and would've affected the entire state. Every county would have, um, done their updates every ten years beginning in twenty twenty-five. So, as a result, you would get to use better data, but you met opposition in Olympia, politically speaking, because you're changing comprehensive plan updates from eight years to ten years and there was, um, a lack of interest, uh, to say the least, in extending that period of time in which you're doing, um, updates from an environmental standpoint. So, that bill didn't even receive a hearing this session. Um, and it's a conversation we wanna have with you all here, um, this next legislative interim, whether or not that's something that you wanna pursue because.
We weren't an advocate for it. We were somewhat playing defense.
Right.
The original bill would've accelerated the timeline to complete our comprehensive plan. And us in Paulsville in particular were like, timeout, we don't have the staff that Kitsap County has who is the biggest proponent of this. We just finished it. We don't wanna start, you know, working on our plan. We got enough on our plate. It's really all was our.
My impression or observation, observation has been that the county is going to want to move this forward again.
Potentially. I think they had three bills that they were working on this year. I would say that this was their third priority. Um, and I don't believe the other two passed. So, I believe they'll be focusing on those two bills again next year, which would mean that this would likely, if reintroduced, um, not go far.
And really Commissioner Gildner, it's his issue, he's got a strong relationship with Representative Appleton and that's, that's kind of the nexus of why she's dropped the bill. Uh, so, I, once again, I don't think we're opposed to it as long as it doesn't accelerate our timeline on our comprehensive plan. That, that was our, that was our concern with it and so we were, so like I said, somewhat playing defense on this to prevent unintended consequences.
Okay. So, speaking of defense, there were a number of bills, um, that would've been extremely costly for cities that were introduced this year. Uh, one had to do with wrongful death claims. Uh, it was a priority for, um, the Plaintiff's Attorneys Association in Olympia, something they've been working on for a number of years, but because there was a new Democratic majority in the Senate, it's something that was likely, was expected to pass. Um, and essentially what it would do is remove requirements, um, that an individual be a resident of the state of Washington in order to bring a wrongful death claim. So, remember when the Ride the Ducks accident happened a couple of years ago, there were a lot of international students that were on that bus. Their, their parents weren't able to sue because of that, um, provision within statute. Um, I think that there was some, there was clearly a lot of opposition because just generally speaking, that's gonna raise costs. Um, also, another provision of the bill, uh, would have removed the dependency requirement. So, you used to have to be a dependent of the individual who died in order to bring the claim. Under the bill, that would've been removed. Um, so it was a broad expansion of liability. AWC opposed the bill and, um, ultimately, it was one of the last bills that was considered on one of the final cutoff deadlines. Uh, and the bill did not pass, the, it lost the support of the Democrats. Um, so that bill did not pass. Um, additionally, there were a couple of occupational disease claims bills that were introduced. So, for instance, for firefighters and EMTs, um, currently, if you have a PTSD claim, you can't bring that, um, as an occupational disease through your insurance carrier. Um, there was a bill that did pass that changed that. Um, so now that will be a disease that is, falls within, um, coverage. There was an additional bill that would have allowed PTSD and MRSA and strokes and heart attacks and several other diseases, um, to be also included as occupational diseases for firefighters and EMTs that did not ultimately pass. Um, and the, the argument there that was made by AWC was that not enough, not enough data was, um, demonstrated to be able to, to explain that nexus between those individuals and those particular diseases. So.
Work structure's a heart.
I don't know that we wanna look into that.
You're very good, you have a very good background, Mark.
You, you looked mischievous while I was explaining that. I knew a comment was coming. Um, the last bill is the State Voting Rights Act. Um, I don't think that that will be something that is an issue here in Port Orchard, um, but it is a potential, um, cost for jurisdictions that might have polarized voting. Um, an individual that resides within a political subdivision can now, um, now has a private cause of action and can, um, raise that action against a political subdivision if they believe that there is polarized voting. Um, a couple jurisdictions in Washington State have already changed to district-based voting and that's kind of the way that this bill is going towards, um, to ensure that people of all different backgrounds are able to, to seek elected office. So, that will impact cities, counties, port districts, fire districts, school districts, public utility districts. It's a pretty expansive bill. Um, and it's for the most part modeled after the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, that was one of the main, um, Democratic priorities for this legislative session that.
Because we don't have any pockets of minorities in our community.
Mm-hmm.
We're not Birmingham.
We...
It shouldn't affect us.
When we went to the legislative, AWC legislative days, we went the way it was originally presented regardless. And so we went, but cities like Yakima were very concerned, very concerned because they, some of their minority, their diverse population wasn't getting, getting access to be a public official.
Right. And Yakima and Pasco are the two cities in, specifically that have changed their voting systems federal, or pursuant to a federal court order. And so their concern with the legislation is they wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be relitigating the new systems that they had just put into place. So ultimately, that bill passed as well and is going to be effective here pretty shortly. A couple of other legislative priorities to mention on the AWC front. There is now some abandoned and foreclosed homes tools that are available to cities as a result of years and years of stakeholder work groups that Brianna has participated in. So if a property is mid foreclosure, previously, financial institutions weren't eligible or weren't, didn't have the authority to go in and secure the homes, that it could be abated if it was a nuisance. And now that has changed with that legislation. Cities are able to determine if it's abandoned and a nuisance and mid foreclosure and then can, can allow the financial institution to go in and secure the home. And if they don't, then the city can do their own cost recovery through the abatement process. So that's a, a positive win for cities additionally.
Does that require any legislative action on our part to update our dangerous building abatement code?
I do not believe so, no. I can double check on that with Brianna, but I'm pretty sure you're, you're good to go as of right now. State shared revenues this year looked really good. Streamline sales tax mitigation funding increased, your marijuana revenue funding increased. And additional BLEA training classes for officers are now available through the next year. So that is pretty much what happened this year, a lot for sixty days. Looking forward, again, elections could change things a lot here locally as well. I think it's great to express gratitude to your legislators who worked with you this year and in support of you.
Jesse called me and said, did you come down and participate in the bill signing?
And you'll get a cool pen out of it.
One of the things, the question I have, there was, and I don't know exactly what the legislation that was presented, what it was. But people are not building condos anymore. And as we develop, rather than having more apartment buildings built, it would be nice to have some owner occupied condos. And I know that, that that bill stalled. And I don't know if, you know, the status or what it, what it involved and if it...
Or the challenges to it.
Correct.
Maybe, maybe that needs to be part of our agenda because we'd really like to see that.
That's a good point. And so I think that that, that bill was new and was not something that was at the forefront of many cities' priorities. And so the individuals that were weighing into it were limited, I mean, there was just a limited number of people that were supporting it. So I think if, if that's an issue for the city, that's something we would want to put both on the legislative agenda and then also talk to AWC really early on and flag that so that that can go on their legislative priorities and is going out in their bulletin and then in turn gets the, the support it needs. I think it just met the shot clock, really.
No, it has, it has to do with litigation. The homeowners associations, condo associations sue the developer.
But it affects, it affects finance because no man's law of finance comes because of litigation.
So it's, yeah, it's, it's changing it so that condos and apartments have limit, or have similar liability so that there's more parity there.
So what happened, what typically happens is it's a law. Whether it's flaws, they, they find everything they can under the sun wrong with the condo association and sue the developer in this window of time that they're allowed to do that.
It's something like ten years, it's a significant amount of time.
Yeah, and my mother-in-law's condo in Seattle, association did that. And they're citing replaced.
Yeah, but consequently, developers are not building condos.
Because they don't want anything to deal with them when they receive risk.
Right. Right, so they're building apartments.
No, I understand.
So I've got a legislative request for the council to throw at Chelsea. Can we somehow support the DNR in funding their regulation, funding their staff to basically do code enforcement on their regulations?
So our, our harbor out here is, that's, that's our, what is a form of homeless camp. They take boats that don't even operate and anchor them out in the bay. They're supposed to move every thirty days and all these boats don't even function.
Yeah, and then the issue that I just found out recently last week, I had no idea what was happening. We finally seized this boat, is somebody will seize the boat or the owner will abandon the boat. It'll be acquired and then it's auctioned for a dollar. And then you have another homeless person that then takes that exact same boat that sunk in City Portrait, who now have raised it, took it to the marina. It gets sold for a dollar to another person that goes immediately out, it sinks. So we keep refloating these boats and keep re-sinking. And it's, and it costs money and now we're trying to figure out...
And we have a police boat, so we're the, we end up being the enforcement agent.
Because the DNR basically says we don't have funding to go off, outside our office building. So it's just, it's just this vicious cycle. And we finally purchased a boat that was, yeah, that was a sailboat that it had...
To make, to demolish it.
To demolish it, and now we're having to pay to demolish it. We're having to figure out how, and then there's those two sunk boats by Yachtfish that we're now trying to figure out. If they give them to us and Yachtfish destroys it, but we truck the debris out. And it's like, why is this even our issue? Why is it the DNR?
Well, if we don't deal with it, then we have bigger problems.
Right.
Right, so I'm just saying, I support cleaning the DNR.
Okay, well, I'll share that with Brianna, we'll look into that.
Or DNR at least doing their job.
Right, and I don't think that, that's something that we can work on in the interim rather than waiting until next session.
Yeah, no, it's a next session.
No, it's not, we're, we're hearing, we're going to talk to...
DNR.
DNR about doing their job.
Well, what they told us is, or told Dad was, we don't have funding to step outside our office, so we're lucky that...
Well, that's, that's why we have a powerful lobbyist toward it.
Brianna, yeah.
All right, Jay's got one.
Armory dead, or what can we do to revive it, do a little...
Dead.
AED, okay, is that dead?
It's dead for this year.
Well, yeah, that's why I was wondering, moving it forward, how do we...
What can we do to move it forward?
Resuscitate it.
So it sounds like the military department would be open, is everybody familiar with, with this issue?
We were working a deal, so the school, school district, or a, a, the school district wanted to acquire the armory. They're using classroom space. We're leasing part of it and transit utilizes part of it for apartment ride lot. So three agencies got together with Jesse Young and said, hey, we've got this surplus asset in our community, how do we go about acquiring it and so...
So Representative Young tried to get a proviso included in the budget that would have directed the transfer of the property to the school district. There was a conversation about what the military department might be open to accepting financially for that or what, what exchange could be made. And ultimately, there wasn't a definitive answer there. I think the department would be open to getting rid of, giving away the armory if they receive fair market value. But a proviso that's directing them to do so was not seen as, was not to... Yeah, it wasn't taking, didn't go over well in Olympia. So that armory, the proviso was included in the initial budget proposal and then was removed prior to the release of the final negotiated capital budget. So that's a conversation that would need to take place with Representative Young and the military department during the interim to figure out if there is agreement. So that, I mean, those sorts of details need to be figured out prior to introducing bill language in Olympia.
I was just wondering, you know, I mean, what can we do to resuscitate it or start, start the process?
Find out what they, what they want.
Make the deal before you put it in the, in the bill.
Right.
It seems like they don't want to get rid of it, so that bill has got to be filled with this system.
Oh, we already, yeah, we've already met that part, that qualification.
It sounds like they had programs that they were hoping to put in the building in future years. And there was also a question about how long the leases were going to go and whether or not they were ready to give those up, so...
They only, only sign one year leases with us.
Same year.
Yeah.
How much is that building worth?
Depends on who you talk to.
And that, that's a big issue, yeah.
Yeah, that is...
It's worth a fortune to the military department, but, you know. We, we're, our police department, there's a nice building in the back that's, I don't know, forty by twenty, I would say. It's got a nice big garage door, it's secure, it's within the compounds, it's secure. So our police department's, you know, storing things in it. From motorcycles to bicycles to cones, you know. We have a big traffic incident, we need a bunch of cones.
It has a lot of potential for, for all three folks. And so it's, it's more of a question of how, you know, it may just be over time. You know, right now, oh, you know, this is everything we want to do with the building. In reality, if they won't get funded, they won't be able to do it. And it will just kind of lapse on us, maybe that's, that's the strategy. I'm just kind of looking at, is there anything we can do to move that strategy forward? Just a, just a question.
Do you know if anything happened with the Tulsa with London, asking for studies? There is one little gift to Seattle, I think it was Sam, I don't know if you're seeing it.
Yeah. I have to check on that for you. I, I remember seeing it and I don't, I don't remember how, where it ended up.
From somewhere, but I don't know where that came from, federal money or state money.
I know that Pierce County's like, yeah, Pierce County's got it.
Right, yeah, I just, I don't know the specific figure, I'll find out for you.
So we'll be, you know, between now and November, I guess, actually.
Now and January.
January, we'll be working on our, got a few ideas here and, I mean, we've got three hundred thousand for the pocket park, which, but we're guessing it's about five hundred thousand dollars. So we'll, we'll, we'll be, it'll be coming through you for acceptance of that here soon and our commitment that we're going to fund the delta. And the pushing, that's why Mark stressed out a bit of the pushing for Mark. It's tough to ask for more money next year if we haven't got a ribbon on what we've got this time.
Yeah, the schedule is, you'll see, the twenty-seventh, you'll see the acceptance of the grant and approval of a contract for the design. The design, and that's all within what we allocated in the grant. Because I looked at it and they were not over, they put the, we have that permitting piece. So we're good there, move ahead with that. That'll give us an actual real number rather than a guestimate on construction. At least we'll have an engineer's estimate. And given windows and everything, we're hoping that we can get this project done without having to re-appropriate, re-appropriate at the end of, it has to be done by a year from this June. We may end up re-appropriating to finish up, which is not a big deal because if you're under contract and you actually have a contract signed up, they're not going to take your money away, so...
We just have an issue with, we, once we get to a certain point this year, we have to put everything on hold and, you know, come back in the spring.
Yeah, I think, I think our biggest, what we'll want to make sure we do though is provide an opportunity for legislators to come and see what is being done and find a way to recognize them, that could be done in various ways. But if we're going to continue to advocate for additional spending...
A ribbon on the pathway that drives through the middle of it and we'll have a pretty picture of the pocket park, what will be, you know, later in the year or next spring.
And McCormick Park, which was part of a previous legislative...
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll have a big ribbon cutting out there. So we've got two park, we've got a pathway and a park project that are currently on bid and a significant wall project too. So we'll be, we'll be getting some ribbons this year and wrap it up tree lot two in the next twelve months.
Can I, can I, I'm back to Highway sixteen and Highway three. At PSRC, they, federal money flows through. And there's quite a discussion going on as to whether military centers or military installations are what they call regional centers. And you get additional scoring if you're, well, your transportation projects should be supporting these regional centers. And today, they don't include military centers in that formula. So there's been a lot of work to get military centers recognized at that four county level. But the reality of getting the military centers recognized, it's your state highways that are the corridors into most of those military centers. It's Highway three, it's Highway sixteen, I mean, that's how we get the freight and the... So we're not asking PSRC for federal money for those corridors. So the idea has been presented that the, out of the defense budget, which is significant in Washington DC, can they carve money, transfer money out of that budget for local jurisdictions to support these military centers?
And my list I gave you, we need to add Naval Base Kitsap, they're, they're probably the major player for GORST.
Right, and so, you know, how would we support making that become, you know, some sort of reality? So that there would be a pot of money that's supporting the transportation or the land use issues around the military centers that doesn't compete with the regional center money? And I was thinking that's maybe how we can get money for GORST.
Oh, right.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Bangerville, Silverdale.
Right.
But the problem is you have I-5 running past Joint Corps that nobody wants to touch that with a ten-foot pole because they know that's such a huge tangle. That's the, that's the consequence of having this general provision. So, yeah, I mean, I know that I'm talking with Kim Wall, who's Naval Base Kitsap.
Oh, Lynn Wall, yeah.
Lynn Wall.
Yeah.
Lynn Wall, yeah, it's a major frustration, you know.
Well, that's why, that's why this is... Here we're doing this corridor study and we're going to figure out what we want on seduction. Last thing we want to do is go out and manage a federal project for a state highway. We've got to really engage Brianna and Chelsea here in, in, in... Once we figure out what the need, what the need, we, we, common sense, we already know common sense is what the need is. We've got to have these, this data in our study to tell the story so that we can get, you know, the three to five million dollars around about what we need.
Yeah, I'm sure the Navy built the Coronado Bridge in San Diego, almost guaranteed, so why not?
It's a good bridge too.
He keeps harping on GORST, I want to fix Sedgwick.
Sedgwick is a piece of...
Yeah, well, let's fix it.
Yeah, let's, hey, let's put it on that agenda.
That's right, let's make it part of the agenda. All right, that, anything for the good of the order, anything else for the good of the order, okay? We'll see you in a week.